If these documents are valid, they are consistent in telling the story of exposure to the alien technology, attempts to understand it, and many specific tales of successfully understanding the principles and building devices that have become the technology breakthroughs we all enjoy today. There is a case to be made that the three crash recoveries of Missouri in April 1941 and LA in February 1942, 1,430 rounds of ammunition during the famous LA air raid, resulted in a specific contract to study how germanium and silicon might be used in the preparation of semiconductors. Those individuals receiving reports and samples included Edward Condon at Westinghouse, Bell Laboratories, Hans Bethe of MIT Radiation Laboratory, and Shockley of Bell Telephone Laboratories in 1945, who was given credit for inventing the transistor in 1947. These leaked documents, taken as a whole, visualize and speculate on the impact of alien technology on our society in a diverse array of fields of science and technology.
Dr. Vallone, 10 minutes.
I'd like to start with my slides and show them exclusively as I go through them. First of all, zero-point energy is very famous. I wrote a book on it. I wrote two books, actually, and it's been confirmed consistently even up to last week where our future energy news announced some new polymer pyroll that actually can't be explained unless two-thirds of it is due to zero-point energy. Next slide. And here we have the reason why zero-point energy may be important. Yes. Okay, this is an example of many. You've probably seen some of these already. The craft is spinning. It's up close. It looks like a legitimate, authentic video, amateur video, and right about now you're going to see a very fast acceleration. And that's what we've been talking about, folks. Let's go back to the slides. The G-forces on that would be incredible. And the important part is that this introduces a concept which I'd like to share with the panel, and that is inertia is involved. And as we get to the next slide, hopefully we can see that, the inertial mass and gravitational mass are totally different. I repeat myself. Inertial mass and gravitational mass have nothing to do with each other. And the important part is that nowadays inertia has been discovered to be a zero-point field Lorentz force by Hayes, Whoever, and Puthoff. This is a seminal paper that's so important that it opens the door to actually controlling inertia and understanding how any ET craft or UFOs could possibly have fast acceleration, right angle turns, and maybe even travel through the universe. It turns out F equals V cross B, a simple Lorentz force at the bottom of the slide there showing how it works. So when we go around a curve and you feel that force moving you in the opposite direction, it's an electromagnetic interaction. Next slide. And this applies to relativity. I heard one of the gentlemen on the panels questioning special relativity. Well, that's inertial mass. That is the M in relativistic increase in mass as you go toward the speed of light. If you can shield inertial mass, miracles happen. And this is another demonstration. I showed this slide to the deputy director of the NRO, National Reconnaissance Office, in case you don't know what NRO stands for. And this is very important because, as you see, F equals MA, Newton's law, can be modified. If if M can be shielded and lowers, then A could increase for the same amount of force. Next slide. Oh, and by the way, the NRO deputy director said, "Well, things like this tend to become more and more classified until they're out of sight." He says, "It's easier for us to reinvent it for a private contractor." And I said, "You mean the taxpayers have to pay double for something like this?" And he said, "Yes." So here's another proof of inertial shielding, and that is the right angle turn that's photographed here with open shutter, 35-millimeter on tripod, 2 AM outside Stewart Air Force Base. The triangle craft started from the upper part, and the shutter was open, made a tremendous right turn, then continued as if nothing happened. Red and green lights make it look like it's conventional. Next slide.
And Dr. Vallone, you've got about one minute.
I understand. I see. And now, the conclusion is electrokinetic equation helps explain how we can combine electrokinetics or electroggravitics and inertial shielding. Pulsed current will produce a force.
I'll be going to Roger Lear.
I, with my surgical team of medical specialists, performed 16 surgeries for the removal of foreign objects from those individuals who allege alien abduction. The 16 cases involved removal of 17 separate and distinct objects. In almost my 50 years of podiatric surgical practice, I have removed literally hundreds or numerous objects from the human foot, including paper, glass, metal, stones, hair, coral, many other objects, including secret metal. At one time, a patient came in with two gentlemen in suits and the proper identification. He worked as a machinist for an aerospace company. I removed the object, and they said, "Please." And so I handed them the material that I removed from the individual's foot. Later, come to find out that it was a new material that was experimental for the use of rocket valves in rocketry. The individuals involved in this study all presented with no noted portal of entry for any of the objects that were removed. There was no visible scar formation, and there was no interruption of the integrity of the skin, even when examination was performed with a magnifying loop, not only examining the area involved but a large amount of the peripheral area. All the individuals in the study presented with positive X-rays or CT scans showing metallic or lesser dense foreign objects. Prior to the surgical procedures performed, the areas of interest were examined by the use of a gauss meter for magnetic or electromagnetic emissions. 10 of them were found to be producing readings on a gauss meter of 6 to 10 milligauss. That is a large amount for a very small object that varies in size from approximately 6 to 10 millimeters in length and about the diameter of a pencil lead. Now, I understand that from the crew here and some of the television people I've worked with, that a modern television camera produces about 4.3 milligauss of emissions. So here is a very small object producing 10 milligauss of emissions. Now, in addition to these type of examinations, we used frequencies of ultraviolet light to detect fluorescence in the area of the object. About 60% presented with positive UV light fluorescence with color ranges from pink, green, to yellow. One of the last surgical patients displayed a large chevron appearing area, like an insignia on the outside of the right arm near the shoulder. He had no prior knowledge of it being there. We have also found that the removal of this fluorescent material with ordinary solvents only makes them disappear for intervals of approximately one hour. But when reexamined again, they appear again with the use of ultraviolet light with varying frequencies. In addition, by use of radio wave frequency detector, we were able to detect that certain radio frequencies in the FM band, both in the megahertz and kilohertz range, were being emitted from the object. It was determined that in one case, the frequencies detected, and this is through a chart that I was able to obtain through sources that I will not be able to mention, but these frequencies were noted fixed or mobile deep-space frequencies. Unfortunately, our limited budget for performing this research has not allowed us to obtain a radio frequency analyzer so that a radio wave could be captured and analyzed. All surgeries were performed—
Doctor, you have about one minute. I just wanted to make you aware of that, so you could— you've got about one minute.
Yes, sir. All the surgeries we performed were documented with eyewitnesses' video and still photography. We established a chain of criteria and protocols for a forensic chain of custody. All the objects were placed in sterile containers using the patient's own blood serum. These containers are then signed and not opened again until they reach the laboratories. I will skip some of the material because of time constraints. We find that in all pathological reports, there is no inflammatory reaction, there is no rejection reaction. There is no— in exhaustive research of human science, there is nothing that we have found in material science that will produce absolutely no inflammatory reaction in the human body. These objects all do. Also, in addition, they are surrounded by a large amount of specialized nerve endings called propioceptors, and these are areas which are not consistent with gray's anatomy. The pathology reports and examination we have sent to material science laboratories, some of these include Los Alamos National Laboratories, New Mexico Tech, University of California at San Diego, Southwest Laboratories in San Antonio, Texas, as well as numerous other laboratories outside the country. ANES research scientists and our science board has enabled us to do some of our own scientific studies. I've already described some of the length and size of the objects, so we'll skip over that.
Doctor, I absolutely hate to do this, but your time has expired. And what we're going to do, though, is suspend and allow you your request, and I would ask the members of the panel to keep their answers, not questions, their answers here, as short as possible so that we can at least get five minutes for our questioning. This technology panel that I'm— how often do you get to hear from four PhD physicists, scientists, everything else? So I want to have plenty of time for our questions, but go ahead.
Do you consider the United States to be a world superpower? Anybody wishes to answer that?
In terms of military capability and force, yes. In terms of intellectual capacity and moral guidance, no.
Congressman Kirkpatrick, would you like to add anything?
I concur, Senator. Exactly.
Thank you. Now—
Well—
This will be very short. Let's assume that what we learned from them up there, let's just assume hypothetically that this is a reality. What kind of a position would you think that the United States would be on a world scale if a third-world country, a renegade country, would release the entire amount of information to the public of the world?
It couldn't do anything. In fact, that's one of the things we hope, that if the issue is brought before the General Assembly and is voted to hold a global conference, then that conference will be its own guide, regardless of the United States of America or Britain or any other country, because it will be beyond their control. And that's one of the reasons why I personally would like this issue to go before the General Assembly and not go before the Congress, which I think will just continue—
Timekeeper, how much— did anybody else have a comment here wanting to respond?
If we can do a five-minute break, we could have seven minutes per minute.
I've got to say, I'm impressed with the credentials of the people we've heard from, people with doctor's degrees in medicine, and we have, in other words, two that are clearly at the highest levels of biological science if they're medical degrees, which I assume Dr. Lear and Dr. Greer have. And I think, Dr. Vallone, I think you're a physicist, as is Dr. Wood, in the physical area. So we've got the— this is a unique opportunity to hear from physical and biological scientists of great stature and qualification. So I'm going to ask Dr. Wood a question that I started to ask the other panel, which I wouldn't have asked if I'd known this panel was as qualified in the area. One of the biggest concerns of people, that— one of the biggest reasons why people don't believe that UFOs have extraterrestrial origins is this whole question of the speed of light.
In my opinion, the speed of light is not a barrier at all.
Okay, that's what I wanted to establish down—
Can I comment on this just for a moment?
Yeah, please.
Because one of the areas that I don't know how much has been talked about prior to today is the whole area of trans-dimensional physics. So if you're dealing with three-dimensional space or four-dimensional spacetime, you have one set of equations. But when you deal with very high-voltage systems that cause an alteration in what's called the spin, spin theory, mass, and also inertia, you have another whole set of equations which have not been disclosed yet that then become operative so that you can go from here to the end of our galaxy and back, controlling for time on Earth right now in a matter of perhaps minutes or days.
Okay, and I don't—
And this gets into—
I don't question what you're saying.
This gets into—
I'm going to reclaim the time, just to say this. I don't—I don't—I mean, I can believe that we do have— yeah, wormholes may well be true and so forth. But what I'm trying to say is that the wormhole theories have not been established anywhere nearer as established as the speed of light and the first relativity theory of Einstein have been established. So what I'm trying to say is, we don't have to establish—I'm trying to ask you—we don't necessarily have to establish some of these physicses which may well be true that could be established into the future, in which there are some interesting indications from even the past that might be happening. Yes, so I'd like to—
I'd like to contribute to that.
So will you respond to that, Dr. Vallone?
We run a conference on future energy almost every year now. It would be one in July at the University of Maryland. Again, we've had David Fronek there several times as speaker. He's a professor from the University of Adelaide in Australia, and he particularly has worked on this. He actually has simulations of one times the speed of light, five times, and so forth. He treats it just like the sound barrier, and he literally has equation comparisons for the speed of sound, speed of light, and so forth. So my emphasis is trying to make it simple, and that is the inertial mass is the key to understanding how this is possible, and the special relativity equations, which I'm very familiar with, only deal with inertial mass.
If I should reclaim my time really quickly—
Yeah, and so we've got a manipulation—
If we start talking about artificial intelligence being involved in the control of certain vehicles as opposed to natural intelligence being in control, couldn't we also overcome some of these barriers?
Okay. The first thing I want to do is thank you all for adding an even deeper level of credibility to this hearing that we've had this week. Thank you very much. The subject of ufology is so out there that we have to— many of us have to just know that because of who you are, what we're doing is what we should be doing. So, but speaking of what we should be doing, my question to each of you to answer in the time we have is, where do you believe that the United States ranks in preparation to meet the global needs for the future? And where will the brilliant students that will become adults like yourselves, only some of them have to be women, come from to meet the numbers we're going to need? Start with you, Dr. Wood.
Well, when you asked the question, my immediate reaction was, when you said the United States—
Yeah.
—I asked myself, who's really in charge of the answer to your question?
Good question.
And so I think the issue which we're dealing with is a truth embargo issue and this enormous secrecy which controls and dominates our entire process, maybe even including the educational process. But if you talk about the ordinary world that we mostly— most of us think that we live in, clearly, we need to establish the ideas that new ideas, the discoveries, as Stan Friedman said, come from doing things differently in an unpredictable way. So I think we need to emphasize the importance of creativity in developing the next set of equations that we need and may have already been discovered, but we need to make our society better and stronger.
Thank you.
Well, I think we already have everything we need to create a sustainable, poverty-free world. It's already extant, and this is very good news. The very bad news is that there is a ruthless, deep national security state that the people I have worked with have run into, that is this massive buzzsaw. And I think that at a certain point, we, the people, and the Congress, and the United Nations, and other countries have to come together and say, "We've had enough of this nonsense." And I do not think this is going to come from an executive order from the President. I think it's going to come from people stepping forward. And I wish to emphasize that, as I did the other day, that in 1998, we declared these unacknowledged special access projects unconstitutional a priori illegal. And we encouraged, and we now have over 500 people who've come forward to give us information, documents, and what have you on this. And I think we need to continue to do that. I think we have to say to people who are really not responsive to the people that this is still a world of liberty, and we have to be free to know the truth.
Thank you. Very good.
I am very pessimistic. I believe that the knowledge, the basic knowledge of all this having to do with the— we've been using the term extraterrestriality as a more general term than it should be used because we really don't understand the entire ramifications of the universe itself. We don't know whether this is a multiverse, whether there are various time areas involved. But someone does know. And I believe that at one time, at the days of Majestic XII and Eisenhower, Truman, and so on, and the state that the world was in, it was necessary to keep this a secret from the public. But now, I believe— again, I'm sorry to be pessimistic—I believe this has moved on from governments, the United States government or any other government, into the hands of a greedy industrial complex that does not want it to change.
Your time has expired.
Thank you very much.
We'll now go to— we'll now go to Representative Barton.
Thank you very much. Because I want our deliberations to be most favorably perceived, I have one little question I'd like to get cleared up. I understand that a bit ago, there was a petition being circulated in one of our communities suggesting that the city water work should stop putting dihydroxide into the water system because if in the future it was determined to be hazardous to health, it could never be removed. Dihydroxide, of course, is water, and it's true that if you put it in there, it could never be removed. My question has to do with a comment that was made both yesterday and the day before, that we're looking at getting energy from water. Now, I'd always thought of water as the ash you get when you burn hydrogen. So I'm wondering, what am I missing here? Unless you're talking about nuclear energy, I'm having some trouble understanding how you get chemical energy from an ash.
Yes, well—
Can you help clear this up for the record?
I can. And we did a great deal of research on this and actually have a proposal that I've given to the chairman for you to look at. Stan Meyer and other people have found that using very high-voltage systems at certain resonant frequencies causes a recruitment of energy from the ambient zero-point energy field that was spoken about so that you can break the hydrogen-oxygen bond, so you have two gases that you can burn. And when you burn it, the only effluent is water vapor because it recombines. Now, this is actually— was done, and it was operational. Unfortunately, Stan Meyer died under mysterious conditions, and he took those secrets to his grave. His twin brother is still living, and people who work with him are still living. There are a number of them who want to work with us in an R&amp;D project to do this, so we convert the internal combustion engines we have now to water engines. And this is not a pipe dream. This is actually something that can be done.
Okay. My next question, sir, then. I can believe that they did this, but unless they're violating the second law of thermodynamics, which I don't think we think is—
No, they're not.
—that we can violate, there's going to be less energy come out than you put into splitting the molecule?
No, that's the whole— that's the whole point of what's called an over-unity system. Maybe this didn't get covered, is that you're setting up an electromagnetic pointing vector—
And we can violate the second law of thermodynamics?
No, no, sir, no. Because what—the—it— no, there's constant conservation of energy, but there's another energy field that hasn't been accounted for—
Okay.
—called, some call it, may call it the Higgs field now.
Thank you for getting this in the record.
So there's absolutely no violation of the second law of thermodynamics, none at all. And that's a very important thing to understand. You're actually taking energy—it's been estimated that every cubic centimeter of space in this room has enough energy to run the Earth for a day if you could tap it properly through these systems. So that means the energy is there, but you have to be able to create a vector into that energy field.
The zero-point energy field he's talking about?
Yeah.
The quantum vacuum, in other words.
Quantum vacuum, yeah.
Okay. I just want to just clear it up because I think many people understand chemistry as I do, that water is the ash you get when you burn hydrogen, and it's hard to get energy out of ashes. Thank you for clearing that up. I think that there's a general consensus that if these UFOs are real and if they're extraterrestrial, that they somehow have learned to do what we would love to be able to do, and that is have an anti-gravity thing. Okay. I don't know how much we know by reverse engineering these things, how much we know about that. But whatever we know about it, do you think that information's being made available to Stephen Hawking's? I haven't heard he died, so I guess he's still alive, and people like him who are trying to harmonize the mysteries of the universe, relativity and gravity and so forth, do you think it's being—I hope it's being made available to them? You think not?
If you're talking about Black Project discoveries from back engineering, no, I'm sorry, it's the same as in the government. They're all in the dark. And they literally are opposed to anything that would violate their little classical laws of physics that they're used to. I know, I've dealt with professors all my life, and unfortunately, it's a big dichotomy between the ivory towers that they sit in and the Black Project guys that say, "Hey, the laws of physics need to be rewritten." And that exact quote has been used many times for those investigating the black world, it's literally called.
It's not just the laws of physics that have to be rewritten, the laws of physiology have to be rewritten because if there are people—if there are entities in these craft, the maneuvers they make, we couldn't survive it.
Yes, we can. That's what I tried to explain in my slideshow. I'd be glad to pull up slide 18 again and slide 17. This is a very important discovery that's been made, and I'm one of the few that have put these things together to describe 17, which is the inertial— inertia. In other words, inertial mass is now known to be a zero-point energy effect.
Right.
And the slide you're looking at right here is slide 18. That's the conclusion of that. The previous one, 17, is the journal article that is probably front-page news and should be because once inertia now is discovered to be an electromagnetic phenomenon, that's an exact breakthrough, in other words. And if we go back one slide, the journal article obviously is something we need to refer to because Hal Puthoff was responsible for that, Bernie Hayes, who I know personally, was also responsible, and they proved it. They literally did stochastic electrodynamics to conclude that it's simply a Lorentz force, F equals V cross B. And if you know what I'm talking about, V cross B, velocity crossing with a magnetic field gives you a force. And you see that in electromagnetism, but who would know? You could see that in a movement of a vehicle. But you do. In other words, you're moving to the right, you want to turn to the right, and your body is going to the left. That's the Lorentz force. That's exactly what you see in electromagnetism, and now we find that it's in vehicular movement as well. So therefore, this is an interaction between the zero-point field, which is all around us, and the individual electromagnetism of your body, of the craft. And exactly that means shielding is possible. And once the shielding's possible—
Excuse me.
My time has expired. Thank you so much.
Time has expired. And now I'd like to go to our new questioner, Dr. Bookman, who, by the way, ran for Congress from my state not too many years ago, five or six years ago, I believe.
Not against Merrill, though. Against your colleague, Rob Bishop. Dr. Greer, you mentioned 25-mile-wide craft.
26.
26-mile-wide craft. And you mentioned that you believe the military-industrial complex has a program of shooting them down. Have we shot down one that big, in your opinion, or from your witnesses?
No. To my knowledge, those have not been targeted. We do have witnesses, and there is a number of testimonies from pilots where attempts to target and bring them down have occurred. And I think that we have to understand that $2.3 trillion in unaccounted funds in the military-industrial complex have resulted in some very strange things going on. I call it the strange Lovian complex, where there are folks who are doing things without proper oversight from the Congress or the President that are really a threat to our national security. The briefing I did for the head of the Defense Intelligence Agency, General Patrick Hughes, really focused on this, and I have never spoken of this publicly until now. But the big concern was is that there was a cabal or a deep national security operation of which he knew nothing and did not control that was doing some rather dangerous things that could endanger not only our nation but the world. And I think this is an existential threat to not only world peace, and I think we have to start thinking not just of world peace but of interplanetary relations and universal peace. But to get more specific, there are portable EMP, electromagnetic pulse systems and others that involve scalar or longitudinal waves that are, as opposed to a— that involve scalar or longitudinal waves that are, as opposed to a light wave that moves like this, are longitudinal, that have been weaponized.
If the United States Congress, or what would you need, what do you feel they would need from the United States Congress in order to be able to feel safe testifying on 60 Minutes or somewhere? I mean, I appreciate your point, Dr. Lear, and others have made this, that we have an oath to the Constitution, not to some independent agency that's gotten out of control.
Correct.
What would it take for those people to be free to their secrecy oath such that they could appear in the media publicly on these issues?
Well, I think the question is, would the media even allow it? As I mentioned, when ABC News wanted to do this with 35 digital hours of top-secret testimony, Ira Rosen was shot down by corporate ABC. That's one question. The other question becomes, I think some of these people, and the briefing I put together for the President that went to him via John Podesta, Senator of American Progress, was oriented towards getting those executive actions done. Because we need federal martial protection for some of these people. I know who they are, I'm holding their documents. It's part of, I hate to say this, my, part of my dead man trigger. If anything happens to me, it'll hit the Internet. I'm probably more valuable alive than dead.
I hope you stay that way.
Well, to the point of keeping the secrecy there. But I'm not going to violate people's confidentiality. What I will say is that there's an enormous amount of actionable intelligence we have, and names can be provided, including members of this majestic committee with whom I've met. And many of them would like to see this information come out. The problem is lethal force has been threatened and used. And I think that this has become something that needs an FBI investigation, congressional investigation, and subpoenas.
I have one minute left. If I've timed myself correctly here, I'll do this.
Yes, sir.
Are you saying there's nothing Congress could do to pass legislation? When I ran for Congress, I called for legislation protecting whistleblowers. Last, this administration has been prosecuting whistleblowers like crazy.
Right.
And I said, we need to protect whistleblowers and waste, fraud, criminal activity in the UFO issue. And all the media focused on in my campaign was ridiculing me over UFOs. Thank you, media. Is there anything Congress could do such that those people would feel safe?
Yes, they can issue subpoenas, and they can also require the federal martial protective services to protect them, and they would be. And I think that this is something that can be done if there was the will and the intent within the Congress. Barring that, I think we've brought out as many people as we can.
Somebody was boasting from one of these black areas, which is these contractors, that we have the capability to take ET back home. Is that something briefly, this squares with your knowledge at this point in time?
Absolutely. That's a quote from the former CEO of Lockheed, I believe.
Yes, Ben Rich.
Ben Rich. So it's a famous quote, and it's true. I would agree with it.
If you think that's believable, and that's a quote from the head of a corporation, you know, this is criminal.
Absolutely.
Because we go back to what Dr. Greer was saying, that, you know, we have the capability of sharing this technology and freeing up the world to an unbelievable level. So, we, you know, we stand capable of indicting in the area of public opinion, the head of what, Lockheed?
Yes. That's right, Skunk Works. And he knew what he was talking about because he had all the contracts.
That's fine. I'll accept that he knows what he's talking about. He's depriving the world of possible advancement. Here, all of you, all four of you, you interface with scientists in a whole black area. You know, you're trying to talk, you're trying, where's their moral content?
Well, I can answer that if you.
Where is it? They got a hole somewhere.
Ben Rich wrote a book, and he specifically described the sundown rule. And I wrote about it, it's on our website, it's one of the recommendations we have. The sundown rule should be enforced. And that is classified, fine, how many years? You have to put a time limit on every classified document. And therefore, it's going down, the sun's going down in 10 years, and it becomes free, and the public gets access to it. Right now, we have about 50 years.
Well, I gotta tell you, the Congress has tried to put that kind of a rule in on the laws, and it's never worked.
Well, this is why I think.
It's at least one solution.
Well, this is why I think in the tradition of Martin Luther King, in the tradition of Susan B. Anthony, in the tradition of Thomas Jefferson, we should say, the hell with these games. People who know this, I believe, as you said, have a moral obligation to our children and our grandchildren to step forward with the truth, with the technology, and with the information. Because there is a criminal national security deep state that has basically thumbed its nose at the Constitution. And for that reason, there is no justification for the continued secrecy. And I think that one of the things all of us as citizens have to decide is whether we're going to do that or not. Could it be risky? Yes. Do we have to make sacrifices? Yes. But, you know, part of it gets into, everybody puts their pants on one leg at a time. I was talking to the Deputy Director of the National Science Foundation, and I turned to him, and I said, we really need your help getting this information, this technology out. He says, yes, I'd love to, but it'd be the end of my career. And I said, okay, on one hand, we have the fate of the future of humanity, on the other hand, we have your career.
Your selfish career. Your selfish career. I saw your film the other night, and I want to compliment you on it. I just, I thought that was awesome. But let me just, I think I said it in earlier today, you know, nobody questions authority anymore. The whole population is gutless, and we beat our, we pat ourselves on the back that we're so wonderful, we're the leaders of the world. My God, we are stifling the ability of the world to go forward. And we put that aside because, oh, we're questioning our patriotism. Well, we need to question our patriotism, we need to, I want to give one example. When the Pentagon Papers was sent over to the House and the Senate, they were put under guard, and a member could only go in and read them and couldn't take any notes. And I was 42 years old. When I was 23 years old, I could classify top-secret documents. Are we not at a situation where it's absolutely ridiculous? And then after they were released, it was moot. The Supreme Court was made moot, the Congress was made moot, and the decision was made that any member of Congress can release any information of all these secrets, and it hasn't happened since 1972. So the indictment is on us as a Congress, and that's the reason why, when the whole purpose of this hearing was, we'll take this to Congress and have another hearing. Boy, that's just taking the issue and putting it on a shelf forever, and it just won't happen. Yeah, I'll yield for a question or a statement.
Questioning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of committee. Excellent panel. Excellent, way over my head. I did see serious the other night, which was also way over my head, but I got parts of it. And the whole week has helped me get more and more. But your sitting here today brings back for me the validity, the intelligence, and the necessity of moving forward with this incident. It's just, you gotta have to do it. And you all have provided, without even saying it as an introduction, the technology that exists in the world that we don't now yet display that we have. We may have it, I don't know, we don't display that we do. It's a real critical concern to our national security and to other things, so I want to commend you for that. I think that's excellent. Now, Dr. Lear, I want to go to you. You talked about removing 16 objects from people. I think in my reading in preparation, that was called implantation, and I might have that wrong. Is that the right word?
That is absolutely correct.
Oh, good. Okay, good. I'm learning something here. Okay, then, when you, and it also is related to people who have been implanted with something, and you described that it was a different kind of material that didn't meet the usual, which means to me it came from somewhere else, is that correct?
That's correct. I submitted to the committee a set of scientific documents that show some of the latest work and findings that we find in the material science of these objects. But I want to point out, too, that to my shock, absolute shock, was a paper that was given to me through the Freedom of Information Act in which it describes all my work in the OSTP in the White House, given to President Obama at the time he was trying to raise money for the medical care bill. And the individual that wrote the article stated that if my work was not correct, or the work done by my team was not correct, and that it was secret work that was done by sub-governmental agency, this also should be released to the public because it would save billions of dollars in health care.
And what is the implication? Break that down for me, please.
Well, if we took just the fact that there is no inflammatory response of these objects and no rejection of these objects, you can see that you could take anything that we use medically, a pin, a screw, a nail, a heart, a kidney, any organ, place it into the body, the body would not reject it, and the individual would not have to be on very expensive anti-rejection medication for the rest of their lives. Now, that has nothing to do at all with the material science associated with these objects that we have found here. This is a very advanced nanotechnology. These are nanotechnological devices in which nano-carbon tubes, either single or double wall, I won't go into the whole explanation, but they can be elongated and weaved into carbon nano-fibers, carbon nano-strands, and they end in crystalline structures, which are what we call orthorhombic, which are regular rectangular structures. And we have to remember that in the early days, when I was a child, had radio, and you got a crystal set with a battery and an airphone, and you were able to get a radio station, that was a marvel. So here's a very, very advanced nano, and I say nanotechnological, I'm talking about things that are on a level of the size of an atom, using the principal elements of certain materials, putting them together in such a way so that you're actually broadcasting or switching what we perceive as a radio wave, which may not be a radio wave. It could be scalar technology, which when reaches our electromagnetic spectrum, is converted to a radio wave harmonic, which I know is a little bit complex. But it is sending information to somebody. So if somebody out there is listening to something going on in our bodies.
So therefore, your conclusion, you and your team, as it relates to health care, as it relates to our country, as it relates to our budget, and to our phenomenon topic we've been talking about today, what do you conclude?
Well, I conclude that if there was funding, at least funding, or open-mindedness from the scientific community, which there is not, because they also pray to hire masters. They don't want to lose their jobs, they have families to feed. They don't want to look at this stuff in the way that we've looked at it for the benefit of mankind.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
And?
To the witnesses who have been with us all week, outstanding. I think it's America's loss that none of the press across this country felt the obligation to cover these hearings. The information that we've learned, that American people should also have learned, and those who streamed, God bless them, probably did get some of it, will make them better people as we confront the next 100 years, the next 1,000 years. Because I really believe, and I wasn't convinced before I came in, but we did a little two-minute interview on the close of this, and what I said in mine is, I didn't know before, and I still have a lot to learn, but I'm willing to learn because it's a universal problem, and I want my grandchildren and yours, and our great-grandchildren, to have a universe from which to operate. So on behalf of this Congresswoman, as I go about my day and catch my plane and hope it lands smoothly, doctors, that I can come back and be with you again. We've got a lot of work to do. But I think you educate the people from the bottom up and not from top down. It doesn't work like that. We've done it in revolutions all over this world for hundreds of years. This is a revolutionary issue. And if we're going to sustain ourselves as humans, just a part of the universe, we've got work to do. To all of you, and I'm looking and seeing some of you in the audience as you presented to us, thank you for allowing me to be with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. (applause)